Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of council to order for July 21st, 2025. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda for this? Council Wilson, thank you. Is there a second? And Council Martin. The resolution to resolve into the committee of the ball please. Is there someone to make that motion? Thank you, Council Wilson. A second or please, Council Butler. All those in favor? Thank you, that was carried. So today we have our first delegation is Jen Dost with the City of Trail Public Works Department. And she is here to present the 2024 Trail Public Utilities Water Quality Report. Welcome Jen.
Welcome, thank you Colleen. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jen Dost and I work for Trail's water treatment facility. I will just make sure that this goes. You do the first page, but that's okay. So my educational background is in marketing multimedia design, therefore I recognize that our annual water quality report needed an upgrade. I believe that these days with social media and shorter attention spans, people don't have the time or patience to read through long technical reports. So I set out on a mission to redesign it into something residents would actually read and understand. We missed the first page, so I wanted to discuss some of the problems with our previous reports. So each year we are required by Interior Health to provide a water quality report. But in these previous years, it was highly technical and written more for regulators than for residents. While it met all the requirements, it wasn't easy for the average person to read or understand. And as a result, many people simply didn't engage with it, which left room for myths and misinformation, especially about things like chlorine and water safety to spread. This year I had a different goal. I wanted to create a report that people would actually read, understand, and trust. One that proactively addresses concerns and builds public confidence in Trail's water system. I'll just show you some of the slides from our previous reports. They were... Oh, it's not working. Yeah, go back. Back up now. We'll do some better. There we go. There we go. I don't know why this isn't showing. Okay, so these are some pages from the previous reports. I say reports because the layout was generally the same for all of them. We included complaints and what I believe to be unnecessary information. And then these care reports which we get, most people wouldn't understand what any of it meant. And the reports are filled with pages and pages and pages of them. So the solution, how the report was improved. Okay, so now instead of a technical manual, it's written with residents in mind. Using plain language, it tells the story of where our water comes from, how it's treated, and how we keep it safe every day. It directly addresses common fears like chlorine and lead by explaining clearly why these practices are necessary and safe. It gives simple tips for those who want to improve taste. I added visuals, maps, and QR codes so people can explore detailed lab results if they want without being overwhelmed with the pages and pages of documents. And lastly, we made it more community focused, acknowledging indigenous territories, featuring local operators who maintain the system, and showing exactly how tax dollars support infrastructure upgrades. Now I'll show you some pages from the new report. So the impact, how this benefits Trail and Council. First, it increases transparency and builds trust with the public. It helps reduce unnecessary calls and emails about chlorine taste, lead concerns, or misunderstandings about our system. Second, it strengthens public understanding. When residents see exactly how their water system works, they're more likely to support and value the infrastructure investments you make as council. And third, it modernizes how the city communicates. This report doesn't just meet Interior Health requirements, it actively engages our community and reinforces confidence in the quality and safety of Trail's water. In short, it's no longer just a compliance document, it's a tool that improves public trust. And that is the end of my presentation. And thank you all for listening, and I'm excited to continue evolving the reports in the future.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Does any council have any questions? No?
It's excellent. It's been over the years. It's just, you know, magazines are always a whole lot easier to look at than books.
Well, thank you. Thank you. It stemmed from some misinformation I was reading online and I thought, what's more important than water? And I believe we live in a time when people are more conscious about, you know, what you put into your body. And with living near a smelter, there's a lot of misconceptions about that. So I just wanted to use the documents that we already were doing and making it very clear what it is and what it isn't.
For sure.
Thank you.
High bar for your presentation.
Your better presentations don't tell us how to have our hair look better.
So Jen, quick question. Do you get a lot of calls about the chlorine smell?
Um, well, so I'm relatively new in water treatment, and we do from time to time. I know in previous years there were more. The, I know I've asked questions, I have the the levels of chlorine, like the chlorine will fluctuate depending on temperature or time of year. Or what's in the water, it might taste more or less, or in the summer or the winter because of temperature. But not, not a ton of complaints, just, just a lot of misinformation generally, so.
Okay, good. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
So Jen, we're good to go. Save your drinks.
It's very safe drink. We actually have excellent water. And the other thing, a lot of people don't realize that half of Trail's system is on a completely untreated well, which is really, really cool.
It's interesting, eh?
So.
What part of Trail gets the well water?
So if you're in Merrill Heights or John Mary going towards Wanita, that's all.
Oh, nice. That's interesting, eh?
Yeah.
I love our water.
Yeah, 44-year well still pumping.
That's impressive.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Okay, so we do have some departmental reports for Council today, and the first one up is the Airport Manager, Jacob.
Good afternoon, everyone. Through the chair, I'll just provide a brief update for the airport. We'll start off with some passenger numbers. So June of this year, we had a total of 2,072 inbound and outbound passengers. This is up 442 from this time last year, so the trend is moving upwards month to month. Within the month, we had three cancellations. One was a maintenance-related cancellation, one was a planned cancellation, and one, only one, weather-related cancellation. Moving forward, we did not receive funding for the Ecap program towards any master plan. The province this year provided $6.2 million spread across 16 airports. There was over 50 airports that applied for the grant. So they prioritize it down by, I believe there was three or four airports that took the bulk of that $6.2 million for larger infrastructure projects that they were doing. So the intent moving forward is through the Airport Advisory Committee, we discussed this at our last meeting, was to again submit this year with the hope that we will get the funding, as the intake process this year is scheduled for November, again, November, December, as the regular intake schedule as opposed to the one this year, which was delayed due to the elections. With that in mind, we're going to look forward pending council approval down the road. We might factor in the fact that if we don't get the grant from the ministry, that we plan to have a budget towards creation of a master plan without the funding. But there'll be more to follow. Moving onwards, last week I provided airport data to a third party that's working for the ministry to conduct a DC airports decarbonization study. Right now, we're in scope one and two of the study, which is ultimately providing what the airport's carbon kind of footprint is in the sense of our natural gas, electricity, diesel, fuel, if we have any wastewater, or any fuel burning, tree burning, such as, you know, brush burning on airport lands. So that data was submitted on Friday, and it's, it's a voluntary study that they're doing, but the more reports, obviously, the better. What Deloitte, which is a third-party company working for the ministry, is going to do is produce us a report towards future, you know, environmental footprints, you know, climate actions, and regulations that may come along based on climate action plans, which will be beneficial to our, our master plan towards the aspect of future infrastructure creations, replacement of building, buildings, infrastructure, and types of fuel that we use at the airport. So that should be coming out in a matter of weeks, that report itself, for the first scope one and scope two. Scope three, they're going to be going further into the materials that we use when it comes to our equipment. You know, the age of our equipment and those kinds of things. Also, the airport qualified for a complimentary Google Streetview virtual tour, which is a project by Kootenay Tourism and Spinal Court Injury DC with funding from the economic, City Economic Development Canada. So the initiative is designed to help promote businesses that are leading the way in accessibility. And as we are a KRT partner with completed a recent updated Hello BC accessibility attribute assessment, we had Joey Wall from Joey Wall Photography come out on the 16th of June, and she took a bunch of panoramic photos of the airport, of the interior and exterior. And so what happens is that's going to be going on to the Google Maps website, and it's going to show a Google 360 tour focused on accessibility parking and entrances, reception and service desk areas, public washrooms, interior routes, and main public and customer spaces. So this tour will show up, like I said, directly on Google Maps. It's also going to be featured on Hello BC, the KRT listing, and it's going to be embedded within our own website, social media. And I believe the link should be up and available soon. It will also be showcased on the KRT's website. And finally, the last thing I have is the airport's submitted a report for the increase of parking fees at the airport, which Council will decide on today. And that concludes my presentation for today. If there are any questions to the chair, including anything on the report.
Any questions from the council? No? Okay, looks like you're good to go.
Awesome. Thank you, Council.
Thank you so much.
Okay, up next is our communications management. Something that I think about that. We're in council. Thank you for having me today. Lots on the go as always. I, I want to just give you a quick overview of the communications management role, just to preface some of the current work that I'm doing so that it can help the understanding. The focus areas I'm working in are managing perceptions, mitigating risks, proactive issues management, brand and reputation management, ensuring consistent voice and messaging across platforms, building public trust and support, something that Jen was kind of talking about in her reporting as well. Protecting a business and operational interest. Internal communications, stakeholder engagement, public-facing strategy, content creation, editing, and publishing, and using compelling narratives and visual tools like professional photography to complete this work. My work's grounded in ethics and impartiality, clear, consistent messaging, cross-departmental collaboration, strategic foresight and adaptability, and timely responses to media inquiries. So the current projects, basically, we have some big ones going on around town, and we have a very busy season for public works as well. So I'm working on ongoing project updates, editing, advising, and advising on and publishing public notices for all the public works projects, as well as the engineering projects and facilities maintenance. Managing, maintaining and managing the digital space, website, online listings, and digital ad placements for all of our different facilities as well. For the downtown demolition project updates in specific, I've partnered with local photographer Steph Mallett. He's a very reliable budgeted under comm communications department budget. We've worked with him before. And we've agreed on the goal to create some visually engaging content that honors the history, showcases the contractor's work, and builds excitement for future development opportunities downtown. We'll be taking drone photos throughout the demolition phases, and those will be able to be used in website, digital, social, print, and for historical record. Some of the internal communications I'm working on improving is around the bridge lighting and our website calendars for community events as well as city events. I'm also advising on community engagement and technology. There's stakeholder engagement that's ongoing with the airport, the economic development groups, the library, tech, interior health, local businesses, and more. And I'm exploring the current AI use, future AI use in our organization, looking at opportunities and, and risks, and some advising on policies there for. Of course, events is another part of my role here, and that's event planning and promotion, which involves multiple city departments and external stakeholders. Coming up, we have a Robert Hampton Gray commemoration, which I'm sure Sarah will speak about more about, she's really the lead on it, August 8th. Bride celebrations happening August 23rd. National Day of Truth and Reconciliation will be happening September 30th. The next day will be amazing and aging seniors fair at the same location, the Riverfront Center. Spooktacular on October 25th. The Holiday Magic Parade is set for December 12th. The time, exact time to be determined or confirmed. And then we're also planning the 125-year anniversary campaign. Planning this not to be a date-specific event, but a campaign that goes throughout the year and is in all of our events. So you can expect to hear more about that in the coming months, as we pin down a budget and the campaign itself. There's lots of internal and cross-departmental support for me going on. I think I kind of covered all of that mostly already, but I wanted to mention about social media coordination, how time-intensive it is, and that I'm often bulk scheduling posts, so a lot of the content you see is not being created real-time and published real-time. It's scheduled in advance with pre-approved language that is existing on our website or other documents from council minutes, things like that. So that's where I pull a lot of the content from, and so that it is known to be pre-approved and then scheduled at times that users are looking at it. So I'm regularly reviewing data and monitoring the key performance indicators there. There's, of course, I do have the ability, and I do publish posts at the time that they're, they come up on the feed too, so I'm not saying that across the board. But in order to be efficient and productive, I have to bulk schedule, so just so you're aware of that process. The 2025 performance from January to now is up significantly versus 2024 in the same timeframe. Our interactions have more than doubled from 5,300 to over 13,000, so it's about 51, 52% up from this data-driven strategy that I use. Our overall reach and engagement is up year over year, and I just want to put a reminder that social media is not the primary tool, and it's not always necessarily the best tactic for every communication goal. Our demographic isn't totally balanced on there, so different tactics for different messages have got to be needed. And so looking ahead, we've got website updates and a goal of a full rebuild of the website, including full remapping of all of the information, drafting some communications protocols for campaign periods, and continued modernization of comms and event strategies. That's all I have for you today.
That's all?
Yes, sir.
Just kidding. Does Council have any questions? Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, up next we have our corporate services, and I have the general manager of corporate services, Tracy.
That's me, isn't it? So just generally, Council, we have our next OCP committee meeting for this Wednesday from 2:00 to 4:00. And the committee will be looking at what is the draft OCP. And we've been waiting for some input from those committee members on suggestions that we can start incorporating into that draft. It's been a little slow on the upkeep, so we're hoping we're going to get some more input before that meeting. Generally, my office has been very busy with improvement for our new planning position and a few HR issues that I'm dealing with. We had a very informative meeting with the Communities in Bloom representatives, and they provided us with some really good information that we can use in our staff report coming September 8th. So I, that's it for me. I think Colin has some other things coming from that department, our department, the department. That's it. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Museum Archives and Visitors Center Manager, that's from Sarah.
I've been here a while, so this will be a little longer than you could probably like, I'll start with the visitor center. Henriko very eloquently and elaborately explained the Kootenay Rockies Tourism, that accessibility photography program, and Jody Wall also came to our facility and did a great job photographing that. So again, everything he said, same with us, it'll be live soon. Ditto, exactly. We also submitted some photographs and footage that we had, I believe, that Kenton Duke had captured, captured for Claire. And another video that we invested in a couple of years ago, Rogers, which is taking over Shaw in the area. They're trying to get a little bit more local content, they're trying to build up that, I think, viewership again, so I was Christina, I think it was Kristina Rikowski, I think his last name, reached out. So we provided us a ton of imagery to that project as well, so they were trying to launch a tourism campaign for the area. I just want to share a little bit, we've been, we've had quite a few visitors in the last month. Okanagan, the coast, Alberta, Ontario, England, France, Wisconsin, Seattle, Philadelphia, Florida, South Dakota, California, Kentucky, Tennessee, these are some of the very random places that we are notating as folks are coming through our building, which is great. A few of these people were actually coming to do either research on family genealogy. One trio of brothers were here to spread ashes, I won't say where, I actually don't even know if that's legal. But it was a really lovely interaction with them, and we're so proud to show, show off our building. We'll jump into the museum and archives operation. Q1 and Q2 research inquiries have totaled 120, so this is either in person, by phone, email. Sometimes we even get snail mail requesting some support. This is pretty high for this time of year already, so we're happy with that. We've had 15 in-person visits, 731 program participants, and we have enjoyed 227 and a half hours of volunteer time. We have a couple volunteers from the Historical Society coming to tackle things like scanning, really tedious archival work that we just don't have time to do. And they are diligent, and they love coming, they call it work, they love coming to work. And they've also been the recipient of 369 donations thus far into our collections, so that's the archival collection, photograph collection, sports collection, museum collection, and our special library collection as well. Our deaccession project has begun. We met with the collections committee, part of the Trail Historical Society, last week for a very long day, reviewing the first batch of recommendations for removal or transfer from our artifact collection. So we, I've shared this before, we assessed the biggest and most costly elements of the collection in the hopes that the storage rental unit can be eliminated from their budget. That's, that's the goal here. But it doesn't mean that all of it's going, so ongoing, ongoing storage solutions will always be a concern as every museum faces. We are also working on a new exhibit case. We did put a capital request in to expand the early industry section of our museum. I think I've shared before that in 1967, when all the centennial funds were, were available for heritage projects, the Rosin Museum was built. And at that time, that's where all of the chemical collections went, so they have a lot of those early pieces that we, we can't have, but it's starting to grow. So we were fortunate to be approved for that capital project, so that is, it's just another exhibit case, but we're working on developing the content to make it engaging, please. It was National Historic Places Day, July 11th through the 20th, and our summer student Esri did a really great job. I don't know if any of you follow the museum on Facebook, but she's an incredible writer, and she did a really great job doing some then and nows of some really unique memorable places in Trail. We've had a lot of engagement, so it's, it's great to see people sort of revel in nostalgia and share their, their memories. Programming, as I mentioned, our program numbers have been great. We continue to go monthly to places like Topla Ridge, Clumby View Lodge, and Mountainside, and Fruitvale, who engage with seniors who have difficulty getting out. They love seeing us. We also presented to Trail's lifelong learners, and they're a group that meet at Selkirk, they're a great group. The Hot Stone League continues, and we were actually invited to participate and attend the Glen Mary Grade Four Heritage Fair. They came into the museum and did some programming with us, and they all decided that this would be a great way to use AI to create their projects. So for Addison and I, that was a new one. But we had to really understand the rationale for that, but it was, it was great to see all these young students find a topic in history they liked and be able to present it to us. And we also were invited to attend the dementia awareness gala at Hospice, I think it was Hospice? And fair, Better at Home. They, they presented, Counselor Hanson emceed that event. And I was really surprised at the turnout, it was a really wonderful, beautiful event. And yeah, we sat at a table with some interesting artifacts for folks to handle. We wanted to promote ourselves as a resource for caregivers, as a place that folks would come if they needed some more engagement in a nostalgic setting. So that was great. Events coming up, we will be hosting the Communities in Bloom judges for the luncheon on July 31st. Mayor Jones, you might be attending that, where they usually eat their lunch with us, so we, we were able to piggyback on, to do our tour with them. As Claire mentioned, Robert Hampton Gray Day is coming along. Most, most of Councilors are speaking, if you haven't, just let me know if you're coming, because we are going to include you in the program. And I received And I received um yeses today from M L A Morrison and M P Morrison, who will be attending. So we've got quite a, quite a delegation coming. Um, as Claire mentioned, we are underway with planning for National River Treaty Reconciliation, which we host. And um, I am also in the process of developing what I hope will turn into a Columbia River Treaty panel discussion. Um, which will be led by Eileen Delegating to the Perks of Roslyn. Um, and she's invited some of her um colleagues and people well versed in the uh, in this world and ecology of the river to participate in that. So we're hoping to um hold back here in September on a Saturday afternoon. I have submitted a report on requesting an amendment to the Bylaw twenty eight forty-nine, which is for Trail Museum and Archives to include um rental. Uh, our conference room, just our conference room at a non-profit, non-profit rate. So if anyone had any questions about that, I can answer that. But I wanted to also just speak to um what else you have on your agenda tonight. Um, and Sandy's just going to put up a graph. This isn't a scientific um statistic by any means. But I did want to show you um. Uh, over the last three years, these are the incident reports involving strictly patron interaction that we are logging in our facility. So you can see twenty twenty-three started pretty high. We see trends in this as the weather changes. Um, twenty, twenty twenty-three, we had a total of seventy-nine, so it's a total reports filed, not just patron interactions. Um, but the, the, the red, the dots on the graph are just patron interactions. Twenty twenty-four, that was reduced. Um, and you'll note that the shelter opened September of twenty twenty-four. And then in twenty twenty-five to date, we've only had a total of twenty-nine incident reports filed to date. Um, those um also include those related to um not patron interaction. But I do want to note that in April, so if you look at the uh yellow dot, um. This is involving one patron in particular in April, and in June, they're a little higher. One patron in particular, this person is a house member of our community. It's just we're having some difficulty with our interactions. And of course, in February, that's when our student Sunday issues were occurring on a regular basis. So that's why those months are a little bit higher. Um, but all in all, I just wanted to show you just how dramatically the um shelter has improved our interactions with um. Um, certainly with staff and how we're interacting with our patrons. And on behalf of the library, I'll speak for Samantha as well. We would like to express our support for the renewal of the temporary use permit for twenty thirty-nine Riverside Avenue. Um, where it's currently operating as the downtown hub for the community. Our facility has observed a significant decrease in drug use vandalism, loitering, and theft since the shelter opened last fall. We can substantiate this uh obviously with incident reports and positive feedback from our patrons. And we'd like to thank you for um. All your hard work, diligent work, and the difficult decisions and what you've had to endure in making those tough decisions. Because we, we get it. We get it, and we um, we understand it has to go somewhere. Um, but we just want to say that it's been a, it's been a remarkably improved year since that event. So I just want, I did want to just say it. I wanted to show you with some statistics. Again, not scientific, I just counted. Uh, but I hope that's helpful.
Yes, it is. Thanks.
Yeah, don't worry so much.
Yeah.
Glad that was good. Uh, do we have any questions for Sarah?
Stay in power, sweet tea, please do so.
Once again, you guys are very, very busy and um appreciate the work that you're doing there and everything that you do. And just to uh send a message back that if it wasn't for the River Front Center. Doing all the training with the staff and the community and the workshops that you've done. I think that you've made a really big difference uh in the community from doing that. Because I know I attended a lot of um workshops online and I know that some of the council did as well. So I just think it's important that you guys, you know, um, supported us through that in that way.
Absolutely, and the training is um, it's, and I think you could probably attest to this, having done so many. Um, it's really evolved over time. And I know I certainly have a, it feels a little bit different stepping into those situations where you have to do, not necessarily intervene, but really engage in a conversation. It's, it, it's not as scary anymore um when you've, when you have a bit of um equipment, you know, language to, to, to venture into that. There's a bit more confidence I've been, and I knew all of the staff feel that.
Yes, thank you. I think that's sort of what I was trying to say. It's comfortable for people.
And the investment is worth it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Nice to hear that.
Okay, okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, Sarah.
Hey, on to the finance department, Mr. McClure.
Andre's shorter, isn't he?
How can we?
No, I want uh Kelly Robinson to come and sit in the office. But uh, she's our new deputy chief financial officer, so you get to sit in very front. She gets to sit in the. Yeah. So uh, she has joined us now. She is a um seasoned individual as far as uh. Counting, she's a C P A. And uh, she's uh joined us from Castle. And uh, she was filling in a little learning manager of finance. And uh, she also has worked excessively uh privately with um Cal Tire and also has a little bit of side public. County kind of work. So today is her first day. She's, I think, seven hours in. So, so I, I, I thought it would be good to bring her forward and see if you guys have any questions for our finances.
I know. Oh, where are they going to be at?
Not at all. I did one of my bigger days to Kelly, um, you know, council by the way, uh, he's your first.
Oh, mine aren't one.
And then you've got Counsel Wilson beside him.
Nice to meet you, Kelly. Let's see you around, I'm sure. One in the board.
We met that Council Mark earlier today. You've got Counsel Benson.
Let's meet you.
Uh, you already met Mayor Jones. You have Counsel Cashwell here.
Nice to meet you as well. Thank you.
And Counsel Hanson.
Nice to meet you. Welcome.
Thank you. Very excited to be here.
Yes, so uh, no, it was really more excited than me. It's been a, it's been a tough slog. I'm really pleased to have someone with her expertise and experience to join us. I'm looking forward to uh having that reflect just how we operate um at the city. And then as we work forward on being more efficient and having information, especially for budgets and year end done consistently. And then uh sooner than we have in the past. Last year was, was quite good, but I just see that just getting better. I think it's kind of going to be a key part in that, so just want to bring her up to kind of there, sir. And welcome her all at the same time on the first day. Hope she shows up tomorrow.
I'll be. Thanks, Kate.
That's all I have for finance.
Okay. Okay, great. Well, I just want to thank all the staff for coming today and doing a number of reports. And uh, we appreciate the time that you take to come and, and give us those updates. So um, next on the agenda, the staff reports, and we have the monthly staff reports. And um, can we make this motion all together or do you want to do them separate? Okay, so we have the building department report, the bylaw enforcement report, the building department report. And the report on invoices paid. And the recommendation is that counsel consider and resolve to receive for implementation. So, thank you, Counsel Wilson. Is there a secondary, please? And more Counsel, um, Cashell? All those in favor?
Any questions on those reports?
Oh, sorry, yes. Is there any questions on those reports before we go for the vote? No? Okay, thank you. All those in favor? That was carried.
Thanks.
Sorry, I can't release this. Oh, okay. So a motion to release this staff report? No, we don't need to.
Say, uh, if, uh, we're both Claire and Kelly, if you're wanting to.
Oh, we, oh, sorry.
Then you're willing, you're, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, which will be lengthy, or you can enjoy the rest of your day.
Or we had any time.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm sorry. Okay, so we have a motion that was carried anonymously. Okay, so um, on to Riverfront Center Conference Room Rental Rate. And um, we have a report here from the Museum and Archives Manager. Uh, regarding the implementation of the um non-profit rental rate. Um, and I will pass this over to um, Colin.
Yeah, um, yes, uh, so. I think that the report kind of speaks to um sort of some activities that are going on. And I think in other words, to be compliant, that the manager's brought forth uh the ability to sort of have um. If you wanted to use a space where we are seeing people use the space for free. Um, we want to set up a fee to make sure that there's um some income coming in and that it's just not uh taxpayer funded. Sort of for business, a location would do work. Um, right now, the idea was to sort of allow that rental rate to be for non-profit profits. So if you were a for-profit business, that you wouldn't be able to use it. Now again, you will see uh over time uh whether this is effective, is it costing us a challenge? And may in the future look at adding a for-profit rate as well. I think that uh, it kind of speaks in the report just um making sure that we're being good stewards of the uh, of the Riverfront Center. And then how these buildings are, how the spaces are being used. There are some that are still free, but a couple of the other ones, they want to add this, this rate, room rate. And especially when we get that income, it helps when we project all the different chairs or nothing succeed to be replaced, having a funding source for you.
Okay, any questions for further recommendation? Is there someone that'd like to move the recommendation, please? Counsel Hanson? Is there a secondary? Um. Okay, all those in favor? It's Carrie, thank you. The Trail Regional Airport Vehicle Parking Fee. Mr. McClure?
Yes, um, so uh, through our airport manager, he brought this up. And he brought this up in relation to uh where we sit in our fees of being competitive, uh, and yet also recognizing that we're uh. That there's a service that's being divided there and not scaring people away, but making it competitive and, and it's still fair and reasonable. Uh, that was brought to the airport committee who discussed at length, had questions about what other locations were doing, what fees they were being charged. And uh, that resulted in a motion coming forward from the airport committee that counsel approved at the last council meeting. And um, not that it's a formality, uh, certainly there can be questions and concerns that can be raised here. But um, I think the council's familiar with the, with uh what is trying to be enacted here. So there was any questions for it. I do my best to.
I see no questions. Nobody's got their hand up? Okay, so the recommendation is that counsel approve the increase of vehicle parking fees at the Trail Regional Airport. To five dollars per day and thirty dollars per week respectively. There's someone, thank you, Counsel Martin. All those in favor? That was Carrie, thank you. And for that staff be directed to bring forward required amended by law to incorporate the increase. The parking fees at the July twenty fourth, first twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five regular meeting for the required bylaw readings. Thank you, Counsel Benson. All those in favor? That was Carrie, thank you. So we have an application for rezoning of fifteen sixty-four Diamond Street. And I will pass um this over to Ms. Chini. Yeah, it's actually fifteen eighty-four, Jared.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, in the interest of time, I think I might just cover off the three re-zoning applications together. They're very similar.
I have one recusal for the um one twelve Rosin Avenue.
Okay, so at that time, you can recuse.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so yes, we have three additional uh applications to rezone for short-term rental accommodations. They're all located in the West Trail area. They, uh, as you know, we've been through this several times. The first step is to bring forward a bylaw um for first and second reading. Um, at which time we will schedule all three for public hearing at the next council meeting on August eighteen. Um, all three properties are compliant with the amount of street parking that is required. Um, and again, the addresses uh that are fifteen eighty-four Diamond Street. One one two Rosin Avenue and seven ten Spokane Street. Um, so with that said, I think we can just go forward with each um. Motion, um, starting with fifteen eighty-four Diamond Street. So is there a motion? I thought counsel brought their, put his hand up, and all those in favor? And that was moved, thank you.
I'm accusing myself. For one to four, I was planning.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the next one is um the uh one twelve Rosin Avenue. Was there any questions on that one before we go?
Yep, okay.
And the recommendation is before you. Is there someone to make that? Thank you, Counsel Nathan. All those in favor? That was Carrie, thank you. Wait, the Counsel, Counsel Nathan, you come back then? Okay, was there any questions um for seven ten Spokane Street? No? Okay. So the recommendation is before you um that the required readings of the zoning amendment. Number twenty nine sixty, twenty twenty-five will be considered at the July twenty first, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting. Counsel Benson, all those in favor? That was Carrie, thank you. What? So we are moving on to the unsightly premises for thirty-three sixty Laurel Crescent. Thank you, you ever trip through the chair. Um, another unsightly premise has been identified in the Glen Mary area, thirty-three sixty Laurel Crescent. It's largely pertaining to vegetation and uncut grass and. Uh, it's become sort of quite unsightly and there are some discarded matters in the, in the yard as well. Um, so it is in, uh, contrary to the unsightly premises by law. So we're requesting that counsel pass a resolution um to have property owner clean up, uh, feeling which. Uh, the city would undertake the work um on behalf of the property owner. Okay. Any questions or comments on this one?
Go ahead, Counsel Hanson. Thank you. And Ms. Chini, is this owner occupied or tenanted?
Uh, I don't know if we know that.
Okay, yeah, I just find it very, if it's owner occupied, it's one thing. If it's a out-of-town owner that's not, and it's tenanted, then that's information.
And I actually, Counsel Hanson, in the chair, it is owner occupied. Otherwise, you will see um instances where I may be writing to someone in another town.
Yes.
But the occupant is, is copied up bottom.
Perfect, thank you so much. And Counsel Wilson, had a question?
Uh, Sandy, just as a reminder, when we go do the work, do you send an invoice to the owner?
That's correct.
Yeah, I figured so.
Yeah.
From my memory. Thank you.
And I will add one further thing through the chair. Uh, we, we will be requesting that this matter come forward at the regular meeting this evening. So that the thirty days can start and we can get going if the property owner is still not compliant in a month's time. Okay, if there's no other questions.
Make the move. No, I'll make the move then.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? And that was Carrie, thank you. And uh, the affirmative that the corporate officer of the city be authorized in default to the action be undertaken.
It's a point where that is all part of one motion.
Okay.
And further, so that would have um.
Perfect, okay, thank you. So that was um, moved to Carrie. Thank you, Sandy. Recreation fee increase, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Um, Mr. McClure?
Uh, so um, counsel, now that you've been here for a number of years, you know that we bring forward the request from staff. Uh, in regards to what the, the rates will be, we do that on a, more of a school kind of calendar year versus sort of that annual year. So this is before you um. We've had some really positives as far as what's happening with the use of the facilities. We are looking at the increases that are there. Um, and I think that it just kind of shows in the schedule what the effect is. Our values, that make sure that we're keeping up with, uh, you know, the cost of inflation, but also the cost of uh, of more stopping. And um. You know, the cost of inflation, but also the cost of uh of more shopping and um. The, um, of course, it can be challenging, you know, for. Families to keep increasing to have the, the, the costs go up, but it is a very highly subsidized. So there's really a lot of taxation, it's already being allocated towards the, the pool with the rankings and those sorts of uh projects, so. Um, anyway, that's just one of those things that needs to be taken into consideration when we're increasing the rates and. Uh, some would say that the user rate is when people are using the facilities, so. Help us out on the taxation side, I'm making sure that that is a fee that is some, is staying or is already increasing in this school, you know. Inflationary type range as we go forward. Uh, when you look at the schedule, I almost have to. You can kind of see what that, you know, this is on a single. Visit and then also as well for. Yeah, we're, we're kind of current fee, we're one seven forty five. But it does sound great, so on a significant fee, yes, that's about twenty dollars on an annual membership, but. There's just kind of the, that, that cost effect that you're wondering what the effect is until it's fine enough.
Any questions for Ms. Chini?
The recommendation of three percent, or is it four percent?
Yes.
Any other questions before we move the recommendation? No, okay. So the recommendation is that council approve a three percent increase of all fees defined in the Trail Recreation Fee Bylaw. Number twenty seven eighty two, and further that staff be directed to bring forward the required M and B by law. To incorporate the three percent increase at the August eighteenth, twenty twenty five regular council meeting. Someone to make that motion, please, thank you, Council Butler, all those in favor? And that was Carrie, oh, you. No, Mr. McClure, they capitalized it, we were taking, we reallocated.
Yeah, um, very excited, uh, we have um a. A local vendor that is willing to donate the, the time and equipment to uh. We do the fields at uh. At Wiski Park.
Oh, wow.
And so, but part of that does mean that we uh we're looking at probably some of that work we're having in twenty twenty six. Back at this individual to come and do this work now, um, and there's a certain window to be able to do it. We are looking at reallocating some funding that we probably would have been putting, had placed in the budget for twenty twenty six. Uh, for things like irrigation, some sawdust, again, there's a. But generous, not only this, but also I think even inside the Wiski Park. Group, uh, making sure that volunteers are to lay down some sort of, so, so. One of those opportunities for council, I think, to assist with something that's available right now, uh, helps us, I think, with cost. Pressures that will be appearing, I'm trying to get this particular field up and ready for, you know, for twenty six is the provincials, we want to be ready for that, of course. Having it done earlier will allow that to come, so, but in particular, we are, I think, also marching towards that, I mean. Nationals, so. I think it's uh something that council can consider. The other part, to be clear, is that when you have a budget in your, then by resolution, council is able to do this, so it's, it's within the community charter to say, hey, we're going to take some money away from this project. We're going to allocate it to a project that we hadn't previously discussed, but as long as it comes as an approved resolution from council, we're allowed to make those changes. Can we get a name like contractor, or are we?
Yeah, I, I, I unfortunately, probably, um, yeah, and again, I don't, uh, I've gotten this through sort of our, uh. That's a blocking, that's a, we're having, it's the way on holidays, so sorry, but I could feed that information.
Council Benson.
Uh, through the chair, would we be able to send a, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's just, yeah, yes.
We'll wait till the word.
Yeah.
Yes, personal, first we will.
Okay, so. Um, if there's no other questions, we'll move to the recommendation. Does that council consider and resolve that the budget set within the twenty twenty five capital plan project? Kind of Butler Park Doors and Butler Park that facade. Be real allocated to be, sorry, reallocated to support Bol- Wiski Park Field Improvements with. Total allowable fund of a hundred thousand dollars. Counsel Cashell, okay, thank you, all those in favor? And that was Carrie. And that will be coming back in the regular meeting?
I, that's.
You can move forward?
Just to make sure that we can uh improve this resolution in time for this, this agenda to be honest with us.
Okay. Um, so the twenty twenty five economic development funding allocation.
Yes, um, so I know this has been a while coming, I know that there's a lot of questions back when we first met. Uh, with the presentations, some they want to remember, some they not, uh, for economic development, I can figure it. Uh, but uh we also were able to then see a big change in the LCC DTS, and we also um. Recognize that we had that workshop earlier in this month, and I provided some. Documentation, some of them looked at what they were originally asking for and then sort of what their current asks are. Um, understanding that we had less budget currently set as we tried to um bring down our tax increase requisition for twenty twenty. Five, so we had dropped um. About thirty thousand dollars off of what our budget was the previous years. There's a few kind of bullet points and some, you know, documentation for what each of the group is offering. I have suggested, and that is just a purely a suggestion, so this is within council's. Per view here to, to make different recommendations of what I have, but being that we are about nineteen percent less in funding as to what the asks are, I did sort of take a distribution. Um, uh, methodology towards that, and I, I posed that for council with the understanding that they may wish to do. Now differently, I did provide some additional information today just on. Some of the projects that are, are going on out of the chamber and some of the potential fundings, I got the executive director in the way. In the country, my understanding, so I was trying to get that information, and I hope that council did have ownership needed. Anyway, so this is before council. Certainly the goal here in the kind of the future goal, especially from the workshop that council. And council requested was to try to have a more cohesive and consistent economic development request in that we're. Seeing synergies and that people are not duplicating work that they're doing, and I think we're, you know, we're moving towards that path, we're not there yet. That that was one of the reasons why council decided to, you know, maybe not have as much funding this year, we are in July, and so. Uh, but one of the key factors I believe this year will be that reporting mechanism, we have thirty good. Contracts from last year, and it's like, okay, so here's what we passed that you want to do, and you know, we do these, and we need you to report out on what you've done. Again, there may be some questions about some of the economic development. Programs that are being suggested, how they fit with the city of Trail, and I'm only to, to kind of take those questions and remembering that. Uh, this is, you know, something that we want to do, but you're a lot forced to do as well, so if there's. A different direction that council wants to go, if there are, like I said, a different allocation that you suggest, I'm, council staff is here to uh to. Move on whatever it is you're addressing.
Okay, so I'm going to open this up to council to see if they have any questions or comments on, um. And this um proposal going forward, go ahead, Council Hanson.
Um, I, I definitely understand to get through kind of this year, um, you know, I still don't see an identified. Plan between the three groups, which we're still clunkily working through right now. Um, I would like to see potentially council have actually a meeting with. You know, an economic development practitioner from outside of the area, some sort of workshop with them, we could bring someone in. Just so we can see opportunities for things we're missing, the one thing that I know is that there is no goal for any economic diversification. So right now, all of our eggs are very much in very small, two big baskets. With um metallurgical as well as um through the LCC DTS, the uh, the farmer's market. Um, there's not any sort of um collaboration, looking at ways of. Looking at different job sectors that we're missing and where we can look to identify those and um streamline and build. On things that we're lacking and how we can support self or college better to retain that in our area. So those are a few things that I've just of note, um, tourism, um, we've got tourism that the city does, then there's Tourism Roslyn, then. Of course, the chamber brought forward a regional tourism strategy without the whole region. So there is a lot of moving parts that I think we're, you know, how do we support small business, how do we support larger entities? And I don't think there is a clear path um with the three groups that we have right now. Well, I do, you know, think that the work they're all doing is very important and valid, um, but not a cohesive strategy. So I would almost rather have someone come in and meet with council and these three executive directors and come up with a working strategic. Plan with them, um, for, you know, uh, some of this is, is having, you know, council has. You know, seats at some of these tables, but we're liaisons, we don't actually have votes, so while we may bring forward suggestions and ideas. We actually aren't voting members for the LCC DTS, the Chamber of Commerce, or any of those groups. So while they still have directive from their boards, council doesn't officially have a say. So I would like to see still a project where we, you know, workshop with them, you know, quarterly, semi-annually. What are council's goals, um, and have, um, you know, someone come in and, and give us a str- uh strategic plan. For economic development, because there's lots of moving parts to economic development, and I think we're missing some really great opportunities here.
Anyone else from council have any comments?
Well, there is a lot of moving parts, and to be frank, it's, it gets confusing when you try and track through different agencies, but I am encouraged by. Uh, Ken Whitehead's presentation, I mean, there is by a recent email. Uh, I, I'm gaining confidence uh in the LCC D. Yes, and. Um, I'm inclined to want to support them, um, based on what I've seen so far. I also believe that our chamber is an important entity that does a lot of uh important work for our business community. Uh, there are a lot of programs there that probably should be looked at and maybe revamped, um, and I'm not suggesting that that isn't something that they should be doing going forward, but I do want to support our chamber. And lastly, I've been impressed with um Eric Kalasus, Kalasus, and. Ron Perpoken from our Community Futures Group, uh, they have been speaking on point, they've been giving us clear. Uh, up to date, I think, very accurate information on what they've been doing, what they plan to do, and I've been very impressed by their presentation, so. I'm in a position now where I would support uh Mr. McClure's recommendation going forward, that we allocate a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. As he suggested to those three agencies, and I would support that um going forward, thank you, uh, Mayor Jones.
Thank you, Council, Cashell. Council Butler?
I just wanted to. I hope Council Cashell's comments and Council, Council Johnson's comments, and I really like, I'm really encouraged by sort of seeing the three groups. Working together, I think that's sort of been a, a thought on council's mind down the way of this term, but in last terms as well, so. It's really nice to see him, so thank you, Mr. McClure, for all your efforts. Getting the groups together. Thank you, Mayor Jones.
Thank you, Council Wilson, do you have any um comments? This is a really important subject, so I would really like to hear from everyone around the table, what their ideas or thoughts are about.
I think the comment I'd have probably ties into Tia's and maybe aims more at the chambers. When you see their projects, they don't seem to be necessarily focused on business, like, like if you're a chef club. Now they're doing tourism. That'd probably be my only comment, otherwise, I think the other two groups did a great presentation. You have a view?
Well, thank you. Council Bar.
Yeah, thanks to the chair, I think I'm very optimistic as what Council Cashell says about Ken Whitehead. I think he's a breath of fresh air, uh, I think we got to give him an opportunity to move forward with his thoughts and ideas. And I'll be supporting uh Mr. McClure's recommendation.
Thank you, Council Martin, Council Benson.
Um, ditto. Um, I do, I, I appreciate what Council Hanson mentioned about the, the voice at the table in terms of like the direction. Being that the majority of the funds for these groups are taxpayer dollars, so it would be. Um, I don't know, I think that's out of our hands, but I do, I completely agree with you on that, on that point, but um, I'm. Very cautious and optimistic with Mr. Mr. Whitehead and what he's gonna do, and we'll see what this year looks like.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just have a couple of quick comments, I, I know this is a new proposal and a new idea for us with these three um groups. Uh, I think we need a little bit more time for collaboration and talking amongst ourselves and developing this. Um, new economic development uh going forward. What I like about the LCC DTS, it's a nonprofit organization, and quite often. In order to get housing and any of those kind of grants and that, we need a nonprofit organization within our. Um, community or, and now this is part of our, um, our. You know, stakeholders that we can actually lean on to get that housing projects and be able to work with them. And, you know, Cam talked about having experience with busy housing. And collecting data and being able to work with them, and he talked about uh wanting to get housing at all levels here. So, uh, uh, to me, that's really important, but I just like the idea. Of how the three of them did work really well together and they're willing to support each other and um. I just think it's something that's been, it's new for our community that we haven't seen before, so getting those three groups together. I, I really think that uh is something that would be good for us, um. So I am leaning, I am going to support Mr. McClure's recommendation, um, and for those reasons. Go ahead, Council Hanson.
Uh, thank you, and, and while I agree, I, I think this is a really great start of moving forward for now, um. I would like to see them, and, and Mr. McClure, maybe if you could answer this for me, um, to be able to provide more data off of our city. Site, so right now, we've got, it, it, it's very piecemeal to find any information on economic development. And the people that come here from out of the area, they're not going to know to look up LCC DTS, they're going to go to the city of Trail site. So I would like to see some sort of collaborative work, and I don't know who, if that's in our IT or um Ms. Samuelak. But I'd like to see on our website, um, if they do go ahead and the contract with the city biz, I would like that data on there for. Investors to be able to have data that they can search right off the City of Trail's website. If you are an investor or developer, there is an option for you to go to the LCC DTS, which is kind of their. Their animal, and if you're a small business, um, or, you know, grand some business, smaller business, then here's, you know, your accessibility to the Chamber of Commerce. As well as you're looking to um grow your business or um needing business support to go to um Community Futures. So being able to at least have the city as the one-stop shop. Website to provide the information for developers, because then we actually have trackable data off of our own website. Of what links are being clicked on for what, and then seeing what outcomes come from that, that we have some data that we can keep track of. As opposed to relying on other sorts of telling us with no actual tangible data that they can give us.
So a couple of things, um, your timing is good, uh. Ms. Samuelak, our manager of communications, met with uh Mr. Perpoken. And stop to talk about that already kind of starting phase of, we're talking about the investment documents. The one thing that, you know, is coming together is that we are in the process of renewing the website. So a lot of these and sorts of conversations are what's happening, and I mean, it's sort of that genesis right now of how we, you know. Uh, set up a page, because right now, I even, in fact, I told her to turn off the links because they wrote the documents that. Really, these aren't using or relevant, so, but we're hoping here that we do populate that, and that, that is one of them, and I did note that. Um, certainly from uh Mr. Whitehead's work there, that that was one that he had. Um, put in was that whole biz, and then that becoming kind of embedded or part of our website as well. He is also a very data-driven individual, and I think that's one of the things that the council's asked for uh over the years, or. Can we, you know, get some of that information, I don't think, you know, and he understands that this is critical information to have, and, and they, you know. Again, I know that we're in a place where we're uh in a, we're in a different place. But we seem to be moving in the right direction as far as that collaboration, I, I totally agree with you, and I think that the timing of them coming together. Um, because it was also one of the things that uh Community Futures brought forward, and in time, what LCC DTS was doing, and in fact, that we're refreshing our website. My hope is that when we get to the, you know, later winter or that sort of, that we've got something that we can point to and say, yes. Uh, Council Hanson, here's that link in your, if you're doing your business or, or anyone else of council saying, yes, here's the link, be able to go where, here's the spot on the website to be able to drill down and get that type of investor.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. McClure. Um, any other questions before we move to the recommendation? No, okay. So the recommendation is that council approved the allocation of the twenty twenty five Economic Development Funds. So the recommendation is that council approve the allocation of the twenty twenty five economic development funds as follow. As follows, Community Futures, twelve thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars, Trail and District Chamber of Commerce, twenty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars, and the LCC DTS, eighty-one thousand and sixty dollars, a reduction of nineteen point forty-seven percent from each organization's original twenty twenty five funding request. Councilwoman Hanson? All those in favor? Thank you. That was carried. You nailed it. Okay, do we have any other reports? Or many? No? Okay, question period. Any questions? One person online.
We do have one attendee online. If that person wishes to ask a question of council, please raise your hand at this time using the raise hand function. I see none.
Okay, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is a resolution to rise from the committee of the whole, and it is that council consider and resolve to rise from the committee of the whole. Is there someone to move that? Councilwoman Wilson, a second, please. Councilwoman Benson, all those in favor? That was carried. Um, a resolution to exclude the public, recess the public meeting until six P M. and immediately convene into a closed session. And that pursuant to section ninety of the community charter, the public be excluded from this portion of the meeting as the subject matter being considered relates to the following. The community charter, section ninety-one A, the community charter, section ninety-one B, ninety-one B, and the community charter, section ninety-one K. And further, that the public portion of the meeting be recessed until six P M. And further, that council immediately resolve into the closed portion of their meeting. Is there someone to put that? Councilwoman Butler? And the second, please. Councilwoman Benson, all those in favor? Thank you. That was carried.